Good evening everyone, adequate notice this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, the Middletown Township Public School District, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor administrative offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin. Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minwes?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here. I now need a motion to go to executive sessions in regards to HIB personnel matters, negotiations, and settlement agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions. See you in a little while.
Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minuies?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
Let's now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for Mr. Anthony Lutieri, a science teacher at Thorn Middle School for many years, passed away on February 11th. We extend our condolences to the Lutieri family.
This is a flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start off tonight with our student speakers, Sophia Haber-Brock from High School North.
Hello, everyone. Today's topic is the North Park Friday. Congratulations to Matt Calzino with the vows of John Pearson, who meets you directly in January 1st and recites on February 2nd. Congratulations to the workbench, the IT faculty, the coaches, for running the latest academy on Thursday, February 3rd, with husband Sal and sister Becky Wong. The game having been played for millions of years, we're back. On Saturday, February 5th, the Brooklyn Opera National Arts concert is held at Bonn through June 1st. Congratulations to Peter Isher, who has mentioned Ireland's Circle Two program, the Ireland Youth Service, that's shown in Lazer, who brought in Zalat and Dan Williams. Two was also a principal and national performance. And finally, February 11th, a customer of the Superdunk Center, who donated for the final weekend to a local group action. And she said there were two customers as not the people in need, but managed the community. Several advisors in the series, for Miss Baker, Mr. Austin, the liberal character of Jacobson, the little rock where I am, who discussed every other word formation which I choose, and the thousand things which I do. The outside routine dropped from the ancient path on Thursday, February 7th, to the people who sent you in, in 2001. And February 11th, the overtime of 9:00 is against that, that was still so much about common. For the 23, number 6, that went into an maximum of 70,000. Second place in the judges, with Alan Burley, the chance of living, and Bruce Chris Murray, who just scored 4,000, and Heather Bissell. New Jersey, and Jessica Everinga, two million stars, and we do have, standard of financial failure, for proper girls, teachers, and women who work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Now, High School South, Stephanie Buckspahn.
Thank you, Stephanie.
We're now going to turn this over to Ms. Dougherty about the 2223 budget update.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. We're going to give an update on the status of the 2223 budget this evening. This is our second update, our second presentation on the budget. I will start by saying that this budget is not final by any stretch. There are still a lot of moving parts. It is not even considered what we are going to be adopting as our tentative budget next month. It is a work in progress, but we are, we do want to share where we are at this point and give some information about some of the things we've been talking about in committees and also where things look like they're going financially. So if we go to the first slide. The first slide presents all of the projected revenues as they stand at this point that will support our operating budget. Obviously, the biggest revenue that we have for the district is our tax levy. At this point in time, we are using a 2% tax levy increase projection while we're working on this budget. So that would generate an increase of $2.9, almost $3 million in revenue for the, to support the budget. Our second line item is state aid, and we are projecting our S2 decrease to be about[983.43][983.43]$1.1 million, as reflected here. So that will be the next year of implementation of the seven-year phase in of S2. Extraordinary aid is another revenue that supports our budget. As we've explained in previous meetings, it's something that fluctuates each year, and we really don't know what we're going to be getting for a given fiscal year until after the fiscal year has ended. However, we do estimate that revenue to support our budget. We have generally budgeted in the past in the area of $1.5 million, but we did receive a significant increase in extraordinary aid last year. We received almost $2.5 million. So we are right now estimating that revenue for next year to be $2.25 million, or an increase of $750,000. Other revenues that we have to support the budget would be our local sources and interest. Local sources include things such as tuition that we receive for some students that we have attending some of our special education programs. It would also include the enterprise revenue that we collect from running the after-school, the before and after-school programs with the YMCA. And it would be some other items. Occasionally, we'll receive refunds from prior year expenses and other unexpected revenues. They normally trend around $1 million, $1.1 million, so that's what we've projected for next year. Right now, we have revenue from capital reserve. Capital reserve needs to be used only for eligible projects. So at this point in time, we have projects that would total $683,000 that we could utilize our capital reserve for. This number is very likely to change, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But that is coming out of reserves that the board has set aside previously. The federal aid through semi, that is something that we are required to budget every year. We are told what to budget unless we apply for a waiver, which would mean that we didn't feel that we could collect this revenue. We do normally hit our revenue targets for the semi. It's Medicaid billing for some of the services that we provide our students. The state requires you to participate in this program unless you get a waiver, but we don't apply for that, and we don't need to apply for that, just so you know how it works. We receive about one-third of the monies that are collected through these billings, and the state gets two-thirds of that. So we do, we do work with the state on that. We're not anticipating to use any of our maintenance reserve to support the budget for next year at this time, so that's why there's nothing there. The transportation fees from other educational authorities, we've increased that amount from $800,000 to $1 million. As we've talked about in the past, we've worked very hard to incorporate other districts into our transportation routes that are going out of district to save costs to us and also to save the other district's cost. When we work together and put students on the same route and share the cost, it's cheaper than each district getting their own route. So based on the amount of anticipated jointures, we call them, with other districts, we are anticipating bringing in about $1 million of revenue on that, which would then be offset, an offset to our transportation budget. It will also, and you'll see when we talk about the expenditures, it will, the full cost of the routes will be included in our transportation expenditure. So you have to look at these two items together to get a good picture. The surplus available, that's the excess surplus that we talk about when we talk about budgets. It is the amount that would be left over at the end of a fiscal year that is above what we retain in fund balance. We, for many years, did not have any surplus that we applied to a future budget, but in the last few years, we have had some surplus available because of some of the savings that we have realized during the pandemic, and it's allowed us to have some of that surplus. So we have almost $400,000 that we generated in the year ended June 30th, 2021, which we'll be using for the 2223 budget. You want to go to the next slide? So here we have a list of our proposed appropriations in the category groups that we report out to the state. Again, this is tentative, estimates. You know, we are still working on revising and prioritizing, but so you get an idea of where we stand now. Our regular programs and instruction, we're not seeing, it's about a 4.4% increase. That includes all of the salaries for the teaching staff and other support staff that are in the schools. Some of the things that are moving there that would cause an increase would be any anticipated raises in salary. Also, we have some additional salaries in here that were funded last year by SRT2, and they were positions that were added under the SRT2 grant, that we are going to be picking up some of that cost locally for next year. We also, right now, are looking at an increase in the paraprofessionals, but that is an area that we need to look at more. We're projecting about a $700,000 increase overall in that area. So again, that's something that we're focusing on to see if that estimate needs to be revised. And we also are capturing about $150,000 for proximity learning, which is learning for, it's meant to support the ASL program that we have in the schools. Conversely, if we can hire, and we'll talk about staff related to that too, you know, this may be an item where it's either or. If we are able to hire our own staff to do it, then we would not need the proximity learning, but we have to see how that transpires. Going through the rest of the proposed or the budgeted appropriations at this point, our special education budget is relatively flat. We actually have funded some things through the ARPIDEA last year, but we also had, we adjusted our tuition budget a little bit downwards for this year because we had, we are looking at what we have currently, and we do have some additional funds in that budget for this year, so we've made the appropriate adjustment for next year. We have co-curricular athletics, after-school, and summer programs. That includes all of those areas with its.
Ladies and gentlemen, the record will be completed in 30 minutes at 9:00 p.m. The computers will shut down at 8:45 p.m. All information is automatically deleted when the computer shuts down. Do not save the information to the desktop. You must save to USB drive or email yourself your files. USBs may be purchased at the register desk. I will no longer be accessible after 8:25, so please check out your IT equipment on call. That until close at 8:65 p.m. If you need to call for a rifle, please go to the children's shelter for the register desk immediately. The library will reopen tomorrow at 9:00 a.m.
Talking about co-curriculars and athletics, we don't have any really significant movement there, but we do have some additional salaries that we're budgeting for, for summer programs that, again, were grant-funded last year, and we're going to be funding them through, or when I say last year, I mean the current year, but we'll be funding them through our local budget for next year. There's also some expected increases in stipends, and then it's not a large increase, but we did talk about the concept of adding some coaches on our budget for volleyball and funding that for this, for next year. So that's also included right now in the co-curricular athletic and after-school and summer program budget. We also have tuition, which, again, is actually a decrease. We have adjusted our estimates from last year in that area, and, you know, it's relatively flat with a small decrease. Attendance health and related services and guidance, that's an area that's going up right now, about six.
About some of the things we've been talking about in committees and also where things look like they're going financially. So if we go to the first slide. The first slide presents all of the projected revenues as they stand at this point that will support our operating budget. Obviously, the biggest revenue that we have for the district is our tax levy. At this point in time, we are using a 2% tax levy increase projection while we're working on this budget. So that would generate an increase of $2.9, almost $3 million in revenue for the, to support the budget. Our second line item is state aid, and we are projecting our S2 decrease to be about $1.1 million as reflected here. So that will be the next year of implementation of the seven-year phase in of S2. Extraordinary aid is another revenue that supports our budget. As we've explained in previous meetings, it's something that fluctuates each year, and we really don't know what we're going to be getting for a given fiscal year until after the fiscal year has ended. However, we do estimate that revenue to support our budget. We have generally budgeted in the past in the area of $1.5 million, but we did receive a significant increase in extraordinary aid last year. We received almost $2.5 million. So we are right now estimating that revenue for next year to be $2.25 million or an increase of $750,000. Other revenues that we have to support the budget would be our local sources and interest. Local sources include things such as tuition that we receive for some students that we have attending some of our special education programs. It would also include the enterprise revenue that we collect from running the after-school, the before and after-school programs with the YMCA. And it would be some other items. Occasionally, we'll receive refunds from prior year expenses and other unexpected revenues. They normally trend around $1 million, $1.1 million, so that's what we've projected for next year. Right now, we have revenue from capital reserve. Capital reserve needs to be used only for eligible projects. So at this point in time, we have projects that would total $683,000 that we could utilize our capital reserve for. This number is very likely to change. We are, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that is coming out of reserves that the board has set aside previously. The federal aid through semi, that is something that we are required to budget every year. We are told what to budget unless we apply for a waiver, which would mean that we didn't feel that we could collect this revenue. We do normally hit our revenue targets for the semi. It's Medicaid billing for some of the services that we provide our students. The state requires you to participate in this program unless you get a waiver, but we don't apply for that, and we don't need to apply for that, just so you know how it works. We receive about one-third of the monies that are collected through these billings, and the state gets two-thirds of that. So we do, we do work with the state on that. We're not anticipating to use any of our maintenance reserve to support the budget for next year at this time, so that's why there's nothing there. The transportation fees from other educational authorities, we've increased that amount from $800,000 to $1 million. As we've talked about in the past, we've worked very hard to incorporate other districts into our transportation routes that are going out of district to save costs to us and also to save the other district's cost. When we work together and put students on the same route and share the cost, it's cheaper than each district getting their own route. So based on the amount of anticipated jointures, we call them, with other districts, we are anticipating bringing in about $1 million of revenue on that, which would then be offset, an offset to our transportation budget. It will also, and you'll see when we talk about the expenditures, it will, the full cost of the routes will be included in our transportation expenditure. So you have to look at these two items together to get a good picture. The surplus available, that's the excess surplus that we talk about when we talk about budgets. It is the amount that would be left over at the end of a fiscal year that is above what we retain in fund balance. We, for many years, did not have any surplus that we applied to a future budget, but in the last few years, we have had some surplus available because of some of the savings that we have realized during the pandemic, and it's allowed us to have some of that surplus. So we have almost $400,000 that we generated in the year ended June 30th, 2021, which we'll be using for the '22, '23 budget. You want to go to the next slide? So here we have a list of our proposed appropriations in the category groups that we report out to the state. Again, this is tentative estimates. You know, we are still working on revising and prioritizing, but so you get an idea of where we stand now. Our regular programs and instruction, we're not seeing, it's about a 4.4% increase. That includes all of the salaries for the teaching staff and other support staff that are in the schools. Some of the things that are moving there that would cause an increase would be any anticipated raises in salary. Also, we have some additional salaries in here that were funded last year by S2, and they were positions that were added under the S2 grant, that we are going to be picking up some of that cost locally for next year. We also, right now, are looking at a, an increase in the paraprofessionals, but that is an area that we need to look at more. We're projecting about a $700,000 increase overall in that area. So again, that's something that we're focusing on to see if that estimate needs to be revised. And we also are capturing about $150,000 for proximity learning, which is learning for, it's meant to support the ASL program that we have in the schools. Conversely, if we can hire, and we'll talk about staff related to that, too, you know, this may be an item where it's either or. If we are able to hire our own staff to do it, then we would not need the proximity learning, but we have to see how that transpires. Going through the rest of the proposed or the budgeted appropriations at this point, our special education budget is relatively flat. We actually have funded some things through the ARPIDEA last year, but we also had, we adjusted our tuition budget a little bit downwards for this year because we had, we are looking at what we have currently, and we do have some additional funds in that budget for this year, so we've made the appropriate adjustment for next year. We have co-curricular, athletics, after-school, and summer programs. That includes all of those areas with its- there, but we do have some additional salaries that we're budgeting for, for summer programs that, again, were grant-funded last year, and we're going to be funding them through, or when I say last year, I mean the current year, but we'll be funding them through our local budget for next year. There's also some expected increases in stipends, and then it's not a large increase, but we did talk about the concept of adding some coaches on our budget for volleyball and funding that for this, for next year. So that's also included right now in the co-curricular athletic and after-school and summer program budget. We also have tuition, which, again, is, is actually a decrease. We have adjusted our estimates from last year in that area, and, you know, it's relatively flat with a small decrease. Attendance health and related services and guidance, that's an area that's going up right now, about 6.8%. One of the drivers there is also the ARPIDEA funds that we received in the current year, which did fund some of our related services in the current year, and now we won't have those funds for next year. So that's an increase of about $385,000, you know, that we are realizing in next year's budget. We also have in this area, and we'll talk about when we get to personnel, we have budgeted for an additional guidance counselor at this point, which has also been added into this area. Improvement of instruction, it's not a large line item, but there is a 31% increase, and that's really being driven by the professional development that we've been talking about in prior meetings. We have not been doing much professional development over the last few years, and we have some extensive professional development planned for next year. That's where this is captured in our budget, so that line is up, you know, over $300,000 for next year, but it's because we're doing a lot of catch-up and we're, we're trying to get back in, on track with that. We go to the next slide. The school district central and IT administrative costs, costs are relatively flat, 2.3%. There is going to be some increase there as salaries are increased for that. That includes all of the school administrators, district administrators, our IT department, all of those personnel are captured in that area, as well as some of our other administrative costs, such as communications and things like that. So, but it's, it's relatively flat. Our operation and maintenance of plan, that is up right now, 12.8%. This is also an area that we are looking to do further, we, we need to do some further refining on and prioritizing on. But one of the drivers of this increase is, right now, a expected increase in our property and casualty insurance for next year of about $400,000. We have not gotten, obviously, our renewal yet. We won't be getting our actual renewal till after this budget is over, but this will be something that we'll be working with our broker on to see if we can revise this estimate, but we're being told across the board for districts that many of them will be experiencing a large increase in this area. We also increased our budget for gas. As we all know, the gas prices have been creeping up, so we've added about another $100,000 to what we had budgeted for last year for gas. We also have salaries in here that would generate, there would be some raises generated from there and would be a, causing some of the increase. And we also are looking at an increase now in our non-instructional paras, which are captured here, so that's another area that we need to look at more carefully as well and see if there's any adjustments that need to be there yet. So, you know, while we stand at this increase at this point, we are looking to continue to revise and hopefully be able to sharpen up some more of the estimates. Our student transportation services, we have an increase right now of 11.3%. Some of that is, as we were starting to talk about before, the fact that when we do these jointure routes, we generate revenue, but we also have to incur the cost of the route, so netting it together. So if you net out the increase in the jointure revenue that we were anticipating, which was $200,000, you know, that brings this number down a little bit, but overall, you know, the costs of our routes are going up. We have actually even looked, and we're anticipating in our budget to be able to collapse some of the routes where the ridership is not where, where it needs to be to be, have a full route, so we are looking to streamline that way. We're going to continue to look to see if there's other routes that we can look at to collapse with other routes, but the, the prices are going up when we are doing the new bids, and athletic transportation is captured in here, and that's something that's been going up. And the other, the other thing that's captured in here is our aid and lieu, and we did talk about that, I believe, last month, the fact that the amount of aid and lieu that we've been paying out, not only has the dollar amount per student gone up to $1,000 in the last couple of years, but we also have an increased number of students that we have to pay aid and lieu to because we can't secure transportation that would be cheaper than paying the aid and lieu. So the state says if it's, if the route costs more than $1,000 per student, you pay the aid and lieu. So although it's a savings overpaying a route that would cost more than $1,000 per student, that's still, you know, if you take a 54-passenger bus and, you know, it's, it's $1,000 per student, $54,000, you know, rats never used to be, you know, that expensive, so it just shows you how the costs have gone up. But, you know, we have, we're now paying out almost half a million dollars in aid and lieu, where just a few years ago it was about $150,000, so it's, it's a big, it's a big change. We also-
Amy, I'm sorry. Is there any, do we run numbers on difference between ownership in the district, owner of our buses, whether it's cost-effective or not?
I mean, we, we haven't done a full study on that, but it would require, we would have the same issue with the drivers. You know, we've talked about, we, we do talk to other districts about this all the time, and, you know, some districts own their own buses, some districts contract out, and the districts that own their own buses, they're having a lot of issues with staffing, just as the contractors are having issues with staffing. So it becomes a matter of then having to increase their salaries and then also, you know, maintain the buses, purchase the bus, the buses, and not having, we can use them in district, but contractors will be able to leverage their buses more and use them for different things, which then would spread the cost out amongst other districts, so-
You just have to wonder when it gets to a certain point, is it more cost-effective for our stoner?
Yeah. I mean, we, we have talked about internally that we may look at in the future, buy a limited number, you know, a few buses to maybe target some of the routes that are more expensive, but we don't feel at this point that buying an entire fleet would produce any real savings. It probably would cost us more at this point, so.
All right. Amy, how many routes are we paying people in lieu now?
I'm sorry?
You're talking about people that are in the district, not, not private schools, right? You're talking about when we paid in lieu from-
Aid and lieu is for, no, that, that's for non-public students.
Okay, so are we paying anybody who's in our school district?
No. No, no. It's non-public students. That's all the law provides for, is to pay for non-public students that you can't-
I know some districts, I guess, other ones, like, I think they work with somebody, they couldn't find buses, so I think they're actually paying-
Well, that, that's if they, I mean, I don't, there may, I've read some different things, too.
No, I'm not advocating. I just wasn't sure whether, there's some, because I know, for example, you look, you know, some routes we had to shut down, right? Like, there were some, I know my kids had, had routes that were discontinued, and they had to combine, and at times they didn't have, like, for example, a bus home, so I wasn't sure whether some, like, routes were just totally not there and we were paying people.
Well, we've had some instances during the year where we've had illness and, and drivers that were out, and we've had some temporary, temporary route issues where we haven't been able to run routes, but we've been able to secure routes for all of our, all of our to and from school in-district students at this point. There may have been some routes that were combined for efficiency sake.
Well, there were some routes that were discontinued, combined and uncombined. I can tell you, my son's bus home from, from middle school, the route was discontinued, then it was combined, and then it's been broken apart again.
Okay.
So I think there's been, I mean, I think we had other, I think there's some elementary schools that had those as well. Pretty sure we at least had at least a half a dozen, if not more, routes that were impacted one time or another during the year, no?
Well, there's, right, as I said before, there's been routes that have been temporarily impacted for staffing. Yes, correct, but.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering about the half a million dollar number.
Where was I? So, talking about transportation, that is something that we're continuing to review, but we are experiencing some increases, but we're doing what we can to make things more efficient and to cost-share with other districts. Employee benefits is an area where we've been able to realize some savings. As we've talked about, we transitioned to a self-insured platform for this current year, and we're projecting to continue that next year, and working with our broker, we, they, we've been, provided preliminary estimates for what we should be budgeting in that area. We have the advantage for next year of not having to budget for the reserves that are required for an insurance, a self-insured program. We've already done that during this current budget cycle. So going forward, we would just be budgeting for any changes in that reserve and not the entire reserve. We've also had good claims experience so far this year, but it is, it is probable that we are still experiencing a little bit of the self-insured, I don't want to say honeymoon phase, but we are realizing the benefit from it. We don't expect that we'd be realizing these kind of decreases year after year, but for next year, we are looking to, you know, be able to budget less than we did for the current year, and we do feel that this is looking like it will be a good vehicle to contain our costs going forward, but I just don't want the impression to be that we'll be saving another 10% every year. We don't, we don't think that that's going to be the case. But for next year, it is producing a, a nice savings. Capital outlay is an area where, again, the capital projects, anything that's a, a large piece of equipment or a project would get budgeted here. That is showing a reduction at, at this point. A lot of that is funded through capital reserve. This also is an area that's not completely finalized at this point. We are still working on considering projects, getting estimates, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute or two. Charter schools, we're not currently fun, sending tuition to any charter schools, so we're not going to budget for that for next year. So overall, our expenses, taking the budget in its totality, are going up 2% at this point, but again, we are still working on many of these areas and looking to get some more refined estimates and some more information. Chris, if you want to flip to the next slide? So our current budget status shows that our anticipated revenues and our projected appropriations, there's a difference of $2.8 million of basically a shortfall in our budget, which is, you know, I hate to say it, normal at this point in time. We do have to work and close the gap each year with our revenues and expenses. What comes into play is, again, looking at things that we may have to shift priorities on, maybe defer some things. We are also looking to still revise some of our estimates, and, you know, we have moving parts in bigger parts of our budget, such as personnel and even benefits, we're not finalized on, we might be able to realize more of a savings, but we also, as a strategy, if we find that we do have funds available in the current year, we will look to shift some purchases that we were planning on for next year into the current year, if it's appropriate and if we have the funds available. So so far, in reviewing our technology budget, we have identified 1.4 million in technology purchases that we were planning for next year that we are going to shift into the current year. We did this, a similar thing for this current year. We were able to purchase things out of last year's budget, which relieved the pressure on this year's budget. It also allows us to get these orders out earlier so that the lead time will be, we'll have enough lead time to get the devices into the district and get them deployed and set up before school starts in September. It has been taking longer to get a lot of these items.
Amy, what is the, you said you, I guess, you call buy down $1.4 million in technology into this year's budget. How much, how much more extra do we have in this year's budget? So in other words, 1.4 is moved to this year. How much, how much extra do we still have left if we move stuff forward? Like, for example, I don't see anything being moved yet for curriculum.
No, we haven't, we, we, we need to review that area and see if we can move any of the curriculum items forward, too. We still do have about $2.5 million left in the current year budget that we could possibly use to purchase some of these things to reduce next year's budget. We do update that monthly, you know, as things come in and so forth, but at this point, we're in February, we're hoping there's nothing that is of significance that would throw that number off a, a large amount, but, you know, we are, we are continuing to look at that to see if there's anything else that we could shift that we're planning to do next year and do it in the current year and relieve some of the pressure on this, on this deficit.
Right, because I was just saying, you have a 2.875 number here, and then you said you have about 2.5, so, you know, let's just look at-
Yeah, right. It's definitely, there, there is an opportunity there to, to close this deficit with, with some more advanced purchases for this year. If we flip to the next slide. This is a graph that illustrates our tax levy increases from 2004, '05 up to the current proposal. So you can see back before when the 2% tax levy cap was implemented, we were all the way close to 6%, and then dipping down to the 2% mark in that 2010, 2011 year. And then, as we talked about last month, you know, we've had tax levy increases below 2%. There have been years where we've utilized our bank cap when, when it's been necessary, and the tax increase has been over 2%, but general, you know, the line goes 2%, and at this point, that's what we're looking at for next year, but again, we're still in development. Our average tax levy increase since the implementation of the 2% cap has been 1.88, so our average is below 2%. You take a look at the next slide, gives a little more information on our bank tax levy cap, and we do do this each year to show the power of what not going up to the 2% tax levy cap can have on the revenues that would have been generated under this budget. This can be looked at two ways, and should be looked at two ways. It's revenue that has not been collected by the district to support programs and initiatives and projects here in the district, but it also needs to be looked at, its cumulative effect is money that was not collected from the taxpayers in Middletown. So again, it's, it's, there's two sides to the coin. So at this point, with our unused bank tax levy cap, if you take the cumulative effect of what that would have been realized in revenue over the past 11 years, it's almost $53 million, and that's not revenue that we can go back and collect later. You know, those are for past years, that, so that number is a valid number. Currently, we have $714,000 of bank tax levy cap available if the district needed it to support their budget. That was generated last year because our tax increase was below 2%. You go to the next slide. This is a similar chart on our state aid, and we did talk about this last month, but this shows it graphically, how it dipped down severely in the 2010, 2011 year, then it, it did increase over a period of time. We did get some of those funds back, and now, since the implementation of S2, we're on a downward trend again, so it just illustrates that. We talk about the next slide. Talk a little bit about personnel, since it is the biggest driver of our budget. As we have mentioned before, we do not have settled contracts for three of our bargaining unions, so that's something that we're still looking to incorporate into next year's budget without knowing all of the definitive, definitive information on it. We do have some additional personnel needs that are being considered at this point that have been identified. I know this has been discussed with the Personnel Committee, looking to potentially add a business teacher for the CTE pathway, a high school guidance counselor, three to four American Sign Language teachers for the middle and high school level. We're looking at potentially needing an additional teacher at Middletown Village, just based upon the enrollment projections at this point, and we're also looking to move some of our part-time teachers in ESL High School and two part-time elementary interventionists to potentially full-time. But this is not an all-inclusive list. We are still evaluating special education needs, high school staffing, these are all pieces that we're still working on. There is also some impact on our local budget for positions and programs that were added with the S2 funds last year that we will be funding locally this year. It's in the neighborhood of $250,000, so that is, all of these things that we just talked about are included in our budget projection already, except for the special education needs and the high school staffing that we haven't defined yet.
So I guess, I don't, when you say there might be an impact from the S2, wouldn't that be in the budget already?
That, that's in the budget already.
It's in there already, okay.
So it is, right.
So we already know the impact.
Right. There is an impact, yes. Capital and maintenance reserves, this is just a recap of the amounts that we had at the end of the last fiscal year, the amount that we've used during this fiscal year, and then the amount that's allocated to the budget right now, again, subject to change, and what the remaining balance would be that would be unallocated. And again, our reserve- And again, our reserve balances are well below what the allowable balances would be for capital and maintenance reserve. So if you go to the next slide? This is not an all-inclusive list, but it is, they are projects that we are considering and have included funds for in next year's budget. But we are still working on other projects that we would like to include and working on getting definitive pricing and timeline and so forth. But some of the things that we're talking about are, there's a rooftop unit at Bayview that needs to be replaced. There's also flooring that needs to be replaced at Bayview. We've been talking about, there's a few schools that are looking to expand their outdoor seating space that's paved, so we're looking to put some more space there at Harmony, Thompson, and Thorm for their outside seating. We're also looking at a ceiling replacement of the tile in the APR at Harmony. We've been talking about main bathroom renovations at High School South, a generator hookup at Bayshore to assist with power outages and keeping servers going. Also talking about replacing some doors in the Science Wing at South. But again, this is not an all-inclusive list. This is what, things that we have so far, but there are other items that we're looking at costing out to potentially add to this. But these projects, again, would be funded out of capital reserve. So it would just mean that we would increase the amount we would take out of capital reserve to fund these projects. So what's next? Our team is still continuing to focus on our personnel and insurance costs for next year because those are big drivers, they're, they're not finalized. All areas of the budget remain under review and subject to change. The state aid allocations, we normally would be getting them this week, but the Governor's address has been postponed to March 8th. So we will not be getting our state aid allocation until after that address. Because that was pushed back, the tentative budget due date was actually extended from March 21st to the 28th. So we do have a little extra time to submit our tentative budget. We are looking to have the tentative budget approved by the board at its March workshop meeting. At that time, you know, we would be giving a full-blown presentation and presenting the numbers that would be submitted to the county office for approval. And again, our public hearing and adoption of the final budget must be done between April 25th and May, May 9th of this year. So we anticipate holding our public hearing and adopting our final budget at our April voting meeting. So we just wanted to give an overview of where we are right now. You know, as normal in this stage of the budget cycle, we are still looking to close our, our deficit. But we do have a variety of ways we're looking at doing that, whether we can revise some of our appropriations. Or continue to look at any funds available this year to relieve the pressure on next year's budget. We will continue to do that. But we have another month, five weeks, to, to work on this, and we'll be working diligently on that. That's all I had. That's the next board meeting we have, right? That we would, at that time, we would be doing a full presentation of everything that had been talked about with the board committees. You know, the board has been discussing all the pieces of the budget and committee and pulling that all together for the presentation.
So we're going with currently a 2% increase, as we're saying, at least.
We, we built that into the projections. Again, if we are able to shift anything, and, and, you know, that, that could change also. And nothing here is, is finalized. But at this point in time, since we still are showing a deficit, you know, we're reflecting the 2%. If we're able to not, not do that, then we can certainly adjust. No, the, I mean, the board will obviously get the presentation, you know, the presentation of the budget before the, before the, the meeting. But we've been talking about it in the various committees. I know the Finance Committee's also been involved in looking at this as well.
First, I want to know, who do you think that we have in this year's budget, at the end of the budget, that we're going to have on spending? How much?
I, I, I heard, that's the same question that John just asked a little while ago.
Do you think that's the same question? Okay.
Right. Well, it is, because that, that would be anything that we feel that would be excess revenue from this year's budget, if we've been able to realize some savings. We do monitor that monthly. And right now, you know, after taking out the technology, you know, we, we still feel that we could potentially have 2.5 million to 3 million at the end of the year. But again, you know, there's, it's February, you know, there's, we're, we're still, we monitor this every month, and then up until June, when, you know, we can make decisions upon whether we put money in reserve. You know, and that, that's the other thing the board needs to remember, that we have been using funds available at the end of each year to deposit into our reserves. So if we end up depleting all of that, if we're able to save money this year and we end up using it for other things, you know, we may not have those funds available then to replenish our capital and maintenance reserve as we normally do.
I also want to know, in the co-curricular athletics line that you have up there, does that have transportation in there too?
No, it doesn't. But it has summer programs in there, which is not co-curricular or athletics.
But I saw that, you spelled it.
Right.
What I want, what I'm questioning is, because the way you bought some technology out of this year's budget, I know this stipends in there for coaches, right? But what, there's probably equipment and stuff. Can't we buy some of that stuff?
That's something we can look at.
Okay.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
How much of that is in there? Is it possible we could find that out? Just to get an idea, it doesn't have to be to the penny, an idea.
Well, we did talk, at the meeting, we talked about uniforms. That wasn't a large amount. I think that was about $15,000.
This is only volleyball you're speaking about, right? Only volleyball you're speaking about?
No, I'm not, I'm talking about all. Because volleyball was not much at all. I'm just curious, what we could buy down, like, use it out of this budget this year?
Well, that, right. We're in the process of, of doing that. And there, there probably isn't a very large amount in athletics. There's some things that we could, but there's other areas that we're looking at to, to do that.
The other thing I have a question on, I don't know what page this is, I don't have a number, but where the bank levy, the bank tax levy is? You put this line in there every year. The cumulative effective, effect of unused bank tax levy cap over the last 11 budgets. Is that necessary to be in the budget, in the, in this? Is that something that's required? Is that a line that should be in there?
No, it's not required. I mean, we, you know, we just feel it's useful information to know that the tax levy has.
No, I don't think it's useful. I think it really is hurtful. I think it makes people upset. It could go both ways.
Well, that's what we said. It goes, you know, it, it, it looks at both ways, but it's something that we, we feel is, is.
11 years worth? That's my two cents on.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have some to say, too. I don't think a lot of people understand what bank cap is. And you don't realize that the number you're putting there, if we used it, that's how much your taxes would be going up tremendously.
A year.
A year.
Yeah.
And it gets compounded year in, year out.
I understand what you're saying. It doesn't, it looks like a grant or something in there. But really, what it means is that.
It looks like we had this.
Instead of $170 million budget, we'd have a 220, 225 million budget.
And it looks like we could have spent that money and we were too cheap to. But what they're not realizing is if we used that money, their taxes go up.
Right. Well, we did, we did explain that, that it was revenue, that it was savings to the taxpayer as well. And it's not something that, this is cumulative over 11 years.
I think it should be taken out.
So this doesn't mean the tax levy would be $52 million higher. It means that over the past 11 years, that's what would have been collected.
Right, it doesn't serve a purpose.
To your point, Middletown taxpayers save $53 million over course of.
Only if it's explained that way. But you know what people are looking at there? They might be looking at more. I understand Amy said it, but all that people see is the number. Okay? It's a perception. There's no need to put that out. That's all. Nobody ever brought this up. In all the years I've been on, I've never brought it up. I'm just looking at it, it's a perception.
It's just a year after the fact. People talk about, oh, you had $8 million and we could have done this and this and this. But they don't realize that that $8 million would raise their taxes a significant amount of money.
That's right. I think when we talk about the state, right, they have estimates of how much, what is it called? Fair share? When we have that conversation, I think that number's more relevant. We have fair share, or what's the other one? The minimum, the minimal?
Well, we, we are at our minimum tax levies. But then there's also.
Yeah, they have all these numbers, I think you presented last time as well, of like what the state thinks to fair shares. I think that number's more relevant for that conversation. It fits into that conversation.
Well, I don't, I don't have that number in front of me.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying in the future.
It was in the area of $170 million for the tax levy. And our tax levy, you know, as proposed for next year is 152. So, you know, we are below that local fair share.
Yeah. I'm saying that number is more relevant.
Okay. Anything else the board wants to see or not see? We're certainly happy to adjust the presentation.
I guess at some point, we got to figure out, like, do we want to be at 2%, as Joan mentioned? Then the question's going to be, I thought we were going to have different projections at 1%, 1.5%, and 2%. I don't know.
We spoke about that in committee.
I think so, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if that fell down.
I think, I think that maybe we were going to bring it back into committee and show like 1.5%, 1.75%, and then that could be presented then at our next meeting.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, Amy, tell me.
No, that, you know, we certainly are continuing the budget conversations in all committees, including Finance.
And I think the one thing too is that curriculum has a significant, significant amount of stuff. That's like a one-timer. Not maybe one-timer, but professional development, as you mentioned, is higher. That could probably be pushed forward or pushed into this year. And I think there's other pieces in there too.
Well, we can't, we can't push professional development into this year because it's planned to take place next year. So you need to, you need to fund it next year.
But there's elements of that. Okay, maybe I was wrong.
And it's not really one-time expenses. It's been lower the last couple of years because we haven't had the opportunity to do it. But in years prior to that, we were spending money on professional development.
Because I was looking at the, you know, the curriculum, the budget, I think I saw was 2.3 million. I think there was a, there was some, you know, some, quite a bit of curriculum sort of purchases. So maybe we can look at what that number could be that we could purchase this year because technology and curriculum are two areas that we do that in, right?
Right. Absolutely.
Also, just keep in mind, we're in several contracts here, so it's also something to consider. Good? Anybody else in the discussion?
And there may be more personnel that needs to be added to the budget that we don't have right now. That's still something that is being looked at. I mean, we've, we've got positions added, as we've discussed. But as we also discussed, there's other areas where they're still working through the schedules and what the needs are. And that has not been added to the budget.
Good? Now going to move to public comment. Agenda items only. Anybody who'd like to make a comment, please step forward, state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda items only. No one? Okay.
Mayor Paseki, Ashar Jai. In reference to number 14 on the latest personnel, which has the job descriptions, I'd like to start off by thanking whoever decided this to finally move special education under curriculum and out of operations. I really do appreciate that. So I really appreciate that. The, the other thing that would be really useful with this part of the segment, looking at the job description, you have to give a board chart. Could you, so that we can see how things flow?
Everything's good.
Would, would be very helpful. And, and also, when looking at CHINA, I know there's been some confusion at the federal level on what the assistant principal goals are. On websites, for example, when you have a project, 9 grade class, but that kind of thing. He's also in charge of special education. You know what I mean?
But to clarify that, because those are high school, they're, they're really high school decisions. I can work with them, but it's at the school needs, so we can work with high school principals too.
It's like in the past, there used to be an assistant principal that might have been in charge of, not now.
And they're not having time, it's still on them.
Yes, I don't know if it still works that way, but it's not.
Well, usually the academic sections are more for the directors.
Yeah, okay. The other thing, just on bank cap, an interesting conversation. We need to remember too, that historically, I don't know which year now, bank cap wasn't always as big as 2% and if you only put 1%. There are also counting mechanisms in there to stay allowed. Like if your healthcare costs were more average or something like that. So it wasn't all of us keeping the factor in low. So I think it is very confusing to look at that because it's not as straightforward as it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a public comment? I'm going to agenda items only. Seeing no other member coming forward, we're going to close that portion. Go to a proclamation, the NEA's Read Across America Proclamation. Be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses NEA's Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. Need a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? We're going to go to a motion to approve the minutes for executive session, January 26, 2022. Workshop regular voting meeting, January 26, 2022. Budget meeting, February 3, 2022. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? We're going to go to the, next, we'll go to the report of the President. So we do have on the item, the agenda right now, an approval for a board resolution supporting Senate Bill 1200. Before we get to that, I just wanted to let everybody know that this is Senator Vin Gopal and Senator Declan O'Scanlon's bill. I had reached out to Mayor Perry, who happens to have a relationship with Senator Gopal, who happens to actually be the, the Chair of the Education Committee now in the Senate. And we do have a meeting scheduled for sometime in the next week and a half. I don't have the exact date yet. But after we do have that meeting, I will come back and report to you how we make out for figuring out our funding formula, actually, and how that could actually benefit us for next year. We're going to need a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I ask a question? Were we asked by anyone to write a resolution to support this bill?
Any other discussion?
I mean, I'll, I'll just say this. There are, there are pieces of local control for a board that actually I could get behind. But, you know, unfortunately, the way that I look at this resolution and also compare it to ones in the past that have come before this board, is that unfortunately, I think it contains a lot of unnecessary political rhetoric. And as a community, we really remain divided around issues involving COVID. And if the goal, or one of the goals, hopefully, was to really bring the community together with this resolution, unfortunately, I think this misses the mark. I think this could have been done very simply with three short paragraphs, quite frankly, just stating our support for local control without having to contain a lot of this other information, which, again, I don't think is really necessary to further this. So I just put that out there that that's my issue with it.
So to your point, I understand. But there's also the caveat of backing up a resolution, why we think we want local control back, which would be all these whereas in this resolution right now, which we're not going to read all, and it's actually public knowledge for everybody to read it. But does anybody else have a discussion they want to speak about on that? All in favor?
I just have one question. Do we have an update of what, is March 7, the mask still the? Oh, you'll talk about that. Oh, okay.
Actually, I need to let's take a roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes. Let's move on to the report of the business administrator, Ms. Doherty. Need a motion to approve B one through four? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. Report of the superintendent, Mrs. Welkin.
Good evening, everyone. Earlier this month, Governor Murphy announced the lifting of the current mask mandate for public schools effective March seventh. That's Monday, Monday, March seventh. Therefore, March fourth will be the last school day for mandatory masks. Consistent with our safe return policy, which states mask wearing for all students, staff and visitors will be optional unless required by law, the district will operate a mask optional environment for students and staff. I'll be sending information on this to the school community prior to implementation. That's a good thing. Now, the state is requiring grade eleven students to pass a proficiency test in math and language arts as a requirement for graduation. This was something that was in effect quite a few years ago. They went with almost like a smorg, I can't even say it, smorgasbord of options for students to pass SAT, ACT, different assessments that they could pass in order to graduate. They're going back to a proficiency exam for eleventh graders. It's the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, NJGPA, and it'll be giving, given on March fourteenth to eighteenth. We have a little bit of a scheduling problem with that though, because it's only the eleventh graders that have to take the tests. So scheduling, this is a really high-stakes test, and scheduling it in a way that provides the students with the best testing environment has been difficult. It's important to allow the students to test in classrooms and students that needed to, to test in small groups rather than in a large format such as cafeteria and gym. In order to test in classrooms, we'll need to delay the start of school for students in grades nine, ten and twelve on those days. The grade eleven students will follow their regular start time for school on those days. They'll come in their regular time, take the test. Then nine, ten and twelfth grade students will come in when they're done with the test and they'll start their day. Students will get their four required hours. Each class will be at least four hours, they take four classes a day. No student, the, the eleventh graders won't miss any class because they're taking a test. They'll be able to take class just as, as the ninth, tenth and twelfth graders. Delaying the start of the day for non-tested students will ensure that we have enough proctors to be able to test in the classroom and in small groups as appropriate. And it'll ensure that all students, including the eleventh graders, have the opportunity to meet with each of their classes every day. Our high school administration will provide students and parents with more information on the test and the schedule prior to March fourteenth.
I have a question on that. What are we doing to help our eleven graders be prepared for this test being taken from COVID? And missing a lot of things and not being caught up to par to make it successful for them?
John, do you want to?
Through our partnership with Linkit, there have also been sample tests put out that our teachers are using during classroom instruction on a regular basis. Interventionists continue to meet with students during class and also during pull-out sessions to target those areas that we are finding students who are deficient in. Last Wednesday, we met as a district support team, all the administrators, specialists, interventionists and coaches. And we looked at our Linkit Form B results from the February administration to determine exactly where our, our pain points are and how to mediate and get students caught up prior to the assessment in March.
I just want to make sure they have a chance in this.
It is a little crazy that it just sprung on us now and here we are, you know, within a couple of weeks, I have to take this test, but obviously it's a state mandate.
So, so the other students, will they be bused to school?
Yes, we will have, well, buses for both groups to school. John, the, the test, the way they will assess the test is more on a, it's not like, it, it's not like a cut score. It's going to be based on the performance statewide, right? Isn't that how they do it?
There is a cut score of seven fifty for both math and math.
Oh, they do know, okay.
It's, it's, it's going to be scored similar to the NJSLA, formerly the PAR. Basically, the English part tests grade ten English and the math part assesses algebra one and geometry. So right now, we're focusing in our, in our junior classes, which typically are algebra two and pre-calc. We're going back a little bit and reviewing some of those main ideas. I was actually sitting in two math classes today at South and the teachers both had warm-up problems consisting of NJGPA questions.
And when will the message go out to the community? I know not everyone watches the board meetings, but I guess would that be like-
Like by the end of the-
It's being sent out right now.
Okay, I was about to say ASAP.
Before it got out.
Right, okay, great.
All right, thank you, Ms. Welkin. I need a motion to approve C one through four?
So moved.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's being changed on number four?
This is the twelve-month calendar, it hasn't been approved yet.
Wasn't?
No. We did, we did, we did the school calendar. We haven't done the twelve-month employee calendar. This is the twelve-month employee calendar.
Thank you.
Can I just ask who seconded that? I know, Mr. Donlin, you've-
I don't think there was a second yet, actually.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
It was the number two.
Abstentions?
I'm abstaining on number two. Yes, on everything else.
Okay. On thirteen, motion to approve A. Just A, right? Yeah, just A. A and B. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
You're approving, thank you. You're approving those two services? I'm not sure what you're, what we're making.
Oh, thirteen I was on, yep.
Thirteen, A. Thirteen, it had no A.
There's no A, just B.
Thirteen B.
Yes. Correct.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstentions. There we are. Facilities, we need a motion to approve one and two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. Policy, D one, motion to approve?
So moved.
We don't have to, it's the first reading.
Oh, first reading, I'm sorry.
I have a question, I know it's the first reading, but I want to go over P two-two-seven-oh. That policy, is that mandated?
Mr. Renella?
It is?
Uh, that's not mandated policy, policy that we had in place.
Can we call that until we talk as a board about it? Can we discuss it more as a board?
Well, we did.
We did, we did. It was back to, it got pulled a couple of months ago.
We talked about it last week.
And what, what the policy does is it indries people's constitutional rights to exercise their religion without, while prevent, not necessarily preventing, but it prohibits the school from endorsing tho, those practices, but also prevents the school from prohibiting those practices.
We spoke about this in policy, yes.
And, and in the policy committee meeting, we added particular language at the start of it, which explains it.
And is more protective, we have a protective language.
So actually, I have a question about that, Bruce. Well, I don't know if you're done yet.
Go ahead, go ahead. I have a problem with it and I don't know how to explain it without coming to pro- I believe in freedom of rights, I believe in all that stuff, I don't have a problem with religion. I'm concerned about opening the door where we, and I, I, you know, I don't know what I could say, I can't say anything.
We all had that same, that same issue.
I don't want to stifle people, but yet I don't, listen, school is for education and not personal opinions. So I'm concerned. I don't know what's going on. That's, that was my reason for bringing this up again.
This is not, this is related to student activities. If you look at the, the stated purpose of it, this policy is mandated by law and ensures that student religious activities are afforded the same access as secular activities. So if students want to get together and have a Catholic club, you can't say, oh, we don't do religion here. They're entitled to that right to have a capital on it.
So it's protecting their religion and freedom more than-
Protecting students' rights to exercise their religion without the district prohibiting it or endorsing it.
But if you're okay with that and that answered your question, that would be?
Go back a couple of years ago, it was an issue with Miss Bronzo. You remember, there was an issue with Miss Bronzo, that prayer on the field. Where does that fall in this policy?
That was different, my firm was actually involved in that. Because that was the team coach, I believe, so although my firm was involved, I was not, so don't take this as, I don't know the facts of the case. My understanding from, is that the team coaches were-
Encouraging.
Were leading the brand. That's where it became a problem.
That's the promotion.
For students.
For the students.
If the students want to do something among themselves, they have the right to exercise their religion.
Thank you.
And that's wrong. That, yeah, that's- Doesn't change anything that's not wrong. This is like administrative.
So is this policy mandated then?
We already had the existing policy.
No, what I'm saying is he, he said mandated by law, so this is-
Yeah, the policy is mandated by law.
According to Strauss Esme, it's mandated by law, and I believe it is as well.
Oh, I understand.
That's what I was saying.
You have already had the policy? What happened was the US Department of Education changed its guidelines. And so instead of eroding the guidelines that previously existed, which was what the policy did, your policy now just refers to the US.
So the, the question I had was, in just looking at how we sort of, again, just sort of reemphasized the purpose part of this, in a lot of the other policies, we don't have a specific purpose paragraph. I'm not opposed to that per se, because again, you're very clear here in saying that we have to follow USDAOE guidance. But everything that's here is already expressed the same way in one of the following paragraphs. But, and I, I just want to say that I think what's happening is, is that I've actually received a lot of questions, like along two lines. One of which saying, are you now saying, you know, just because of the way it's presented? And I think people just don't either fully understand this or for a whole host of reasons, aren't looking at USDAOE guidelines. People are saying like, so now we're going to be promoting prayer of graduation? No, this, we're not allowed to do that as a school district. However, if we decide that the valedictorian, right, is going to be permitted to speak of graduation and during his or her speech, they say something about their religious experience or something and how it got them through the school, they're permitted, permitted to do that. It's not the school district promoting religion in either way. And then I think the other thing people are, at least people who have been talking to me are getting confused about is that they also seem to have this misperception out there that maybe in history class or any other class that talks about religion in general, that we're saying that that's not allowed, which is not true, because that's always been the case, is that could be part of curriculum at any point. So I, I don't know, I just, I don't know if this really, you know, makes it more protective as, as Jackie was saying before, or if it actually just makes it more confusing to people exactly what we're trying to do with this policy.
Right, I, I mean, from my view, the district is not changing anything. It currently did with this policy, it's just updating the language, which happens from time to time with all policies. And we sat in policy, I was sitting next to Mr. Renella, to do that purpose because the committee wanted to have a purpose there to help people understand what this policy was actually doing. And you're right, it does repeat that because I didn't want to put my own language. I kind of just took pieces of it and streamlined it and made that the purpose. So no one can say we added or tinkered with the language, we used the actual language that was in there. Just kind of summarized it first and then elaborated on it in, well, we didn't elaborate the, under the part where it says policy, that's how it was presented to us from Strauss Esme. The purpose, we just pulled the important parts to kind of summarize, an executive summary of it.
Any good? Any other discussion? Are you good?
Yeah.
Is there another concern you have or something you want to say?
Thank you.
You sure? And that's the first reading, so? Yes. Okay, so we need a motion to approve E one and two?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Need a motion to approve Finance F one through?
Three.
Three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. Need a motion to approve G? G one?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. We're now going to go to?
Personnel.
Personnel. Personnel, one, A through D.
What?
Personnel, one, A through D.
A through D?
Mr. Capone, we also have the item on student services. I don't know that we referenced that when you, when we did the voting on those items. We have on the addendum.
I had G one, right? Do you have anything else there? That's all I have here.
B one?
We didn't vote on anything on the addendum last month, right?
No. I just have G one that I voted on, that was it.
So you want one, A through D?
Okay, so let's, let's, personal report? Which one, Amy, tell me?
On the addendum, there's a settlement agreement.
Okay, I don't have it in front of us.
But we should go back to the addendum and the addendum separate.
So a motion, a motion to approve thirteen, B, one, A?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. All right, so we need a motion to approve Personnel six? Is everyone on the same page? Six?
Oh, what about the personnel?
That's where I have this here first. All right, so motion to approve? Okay, one through? One, two, three, four and five. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. We need a motion to approve six, D through G.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Six is now, there's a six on the right.
All right, so six A through six G.
Yeah.
So that's, you're including the addendum on that one?
Yes.
Oh.
Which I didn't have in my packet, that's why I am a little confused. Motion to approve six A through G, it includes the addendum. Discussion?
The whole agenda?
Nope, just?
No.
You have six A through C on the, on the first one, you have the addendum, D through G. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. We have a motion to approve seven, eight and nine? And ten.
So moved.
You have the addendum, eight on the addendum also.
Mm-hmm.
Also.
Discussion? Does that second it?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. Motion to approve eleven, twelve, thirteen?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. I'll take a roll call, Amy, for fourteen, A, B and C.
Number fourteen, A, B and C, Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes. Motion to approve fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Is there a roll call on that or?
You got nineteen on, right here, nineteen on that.
I don't know, I don't have this stuff. Motion to approve fifteen through eighteen?
So moved.
Discussion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Fifteen through eighteen?
Fifteen through eighteen, yes. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Opposed on number 17.
No on 17.
Well, I'm not opposed, I'm a no.
Abstentions? Yep. 19, 19 and 20.
So moved.
Second? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Which one?
Discussion?
I'm a no on 20, and until we hold people accountable, I'm a no on 20.
I'm also a no on 20 because I think accountability needs to come from top down, and I don't see that happening at all.
I'm a no on 20 as well.
All in favor? Oppose and abstentions?
I just want to congratulate Mr. Kirkpatrick for his appointment starting May 1 as Assistant Superintendent. And we also have Mrs. Alphon, who will be Assistant Superintendent of our Curriculum and Special Education area on May 24, when she's released from her current position. Very happy to have both of them now on the cabinet level.
Congratulations to you all. Amy, did we do the Student Services, 13B. 1, we did that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do that. All right, old business for anybody? New business? So anybody have new business?
I just wanted to say one thing, we're trying to hook up with our PTAs, but unfortunately for me, most of mine are on meeting days.
Yeah, I have one also that, in fact, with that, yes.
So a couple of mine are on meeting days, so it's going to be hard to get to those.
Right, if you want, we can always send, no.
Well, you know, I'm in communication, I have all my dates down in my, I just wanted to say, that's why we're not there.
Yes, that's what I'm going to speak about now, the calendar that we have right now, the governor moves his budget one week and they're giving us an extra week also. So I'm proposing if we can move our next meeting, the workshop meeting, into one combined meeting for the 22nd of March instead, that will work with everybody, just check your schedule, let me know.
What are we doing?
Moving the March 15 meeting to March 22.
Combine workshop.
Combine the workshop and the voting meeting, that's on the same day with the budget.
So then you're getting rid of the one that was on the 29?
No, we would keep that, it would just be a special voting meeting for the budget.
There'd just be a special voting meeting on that 22nd.
So we do 22nd and the 29th.
Right.
We'll make sure our calendars are updated so that.
And pending anything further that's happening in the state, we'll be moving from the library back to North. Everybody's in agreement with that?
So we, can we set the schedule for the rest of the year then, finally?
Sure. If that will work with everybody, is this too little notice, you want to?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to do it now, I'm just saying, though, but we haven't, we haven't extended it.
So right now, we're going to keep the rest of the dates that we have minus the March